Or Neil, for a moment of silence or silent prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh yeah, yes, students, why don't you stay for a moment for a picture if you don't mind? Teachers, if you went on and join them.
Can you tell us a little bit about your organization?
Hi, I'm Sarah Zuck. In SCA, we basically work out for our school, like we help them and raise, do fundraisers. Like lately, we've done a dog fundraiser where we help the animal shelter. We ask our teachers, the representatives, what we want to do for our school to make it a better place. As president, I lead the meetings and make sure everybody gets a voice in what they say. Now to my secretary.
Hi, my name is Bailey Nicholson. I am secretary of the SCA. I take notes and I write things down for the SCA and all kinds of things like that.
Hi, I'm Thatcher Thomas. I'm the vice president. I help out if anything there is. If the president is not there, the secretary, if the treasurer is not there, I kind of take in for their position.
Do you have any questions?
No, it's fabulous that you guys are here. Teachers, did you want to add anything?
No, we let them kind of delegate anything.
All right, thank you.
That's their job. They do a great job.
You did a great job. Thank you very much.
Can you tell us one last time, what was SCA again? Post you count. Okay, awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also wanted to welcome everybody that's online or that's here present today for this board meeting. We appreciate your presence. I did want to say that, as you'll notice, the superintendent is not here, but he, I believe, is going to be joining us online. All right. But I think what I'd like to do is, I want to, as a board, I would like to have a motion that we accept the participation of Dr. Boyd, the superintendent, online.
I don't, I don't know that that's necessary considering he's not a board member.
I know, we've already talked about it. I would like to, is there's nothing wrong with it, Ms. Gonzalez?
No, certainly.
To accept the attendance for Dr. Boyd online?
I move to allow Dr. Boyd to participate online.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Boyd, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Okay, can you hear me?
Mr. Vance, is he, he's online?
Can you hear me?
I'm sure he'll join us when he can. All right, do we have any employee or public comments? Terry? None? None on, online? None online. All right, we will continue on with the agenda then. All right, changes to the agenda. Anyone? All right, moving on. The next thing we have is a presentation of the Y Street Organization. If they could come forward and begin that presentation, we appreciate it. Welcome. Glad you're here. Go ahead, you can begin. Hold on just a second, let me make sure you're, can be heard. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ayla Zuck. I'm a sophomore at King George High School and I have been a member of Y Street since 2021.
And my name is Vivian Wright. I'm also a sophomore at King George High School and have been a member of Y Street since 2021. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you all today as King George considers updates to our division's wellness policy. Next slide, please. Okay, let's start off with what is Y Street? Y Street is a program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that partners with schools across the state to train and engage youth in policy change. As a member of Y Street, I am empowered to make behavior changes that promote nutritious lifestyles and tobacco-free living. Our mission is to tackle large health issues through statewide campaigns such as Rev Your Bev. Rev Your Bev's goal, oh, next slide, sorry. Rev Your Bev's goal is to increase the access, availability, and promotion of water in Virginia schools through comprehensive policy adoption. Our objective for today is to talk to you about the benefits of updating our division's policy and how we can work together to align King George's wellness policy with Rev Your Bev's comprehensive standards, comprehensive standards. We've met with several key decision makers in the county who support this effort and we hope that you will support us too. Next slide, please. Part of working with the Rev Your Bev campaign includes organizing and hosting events at my school and participating in digital activities, collect surveys, educate our school community, and gather support. Some of our past Rev Your Bev events have included water bottle decorating and distributing fruit-infused water samples to get kids excited about drinking water. In addition to hosting events, we will also utilize social media to engage our youth and share important messages with our community. Next slide. There are many benefits to updating our division's policy and the number one reason is that meeting the standard ensures that students, teachers, and staff have water access while at school. Promoting healthy hydration behavior is essential for students and vital to their success. Students who are thirsty or dehydrated cannot perform at their best. In addition to improving student success, meeting Rev Your Bev standards can also guarantee high marks on triennial assessments recommended for use by the Virginia Department of Education. This also includes other statewide wellness policy assessments like the governor's scorecard. If our division updates its wellness policy, it will become an official partner of Rev Your Bev and will have access to a variety of resources. Next slide, please. Now that we've discussed the benefits of adopting Rev Your Bev's model policy, let's review the key points that Rev Your Bev's policy includes. Adopting this model policy ensures that our division recognizes water as an essential nutrient, encourages teachers, staff, and admin to serve as role models, ensures that there is easy access to water free of charge, and makes free water available throughout the school. Next slide, please. This policy would also allow students to carry water bottles, require maintenance on water sources, specify a communication plan, and appoint key personnel. Next slide, please. To meet Rev Your Bev's policy standards, we would only require very minimal changes to our wellness policy, which are outlined in red. Rev Your Bev has drafted language edits, edits, which adjust adding to the end of the nutrition guidelines section. These edits would recognize water as an essential nutrient, encourage role modeling for healthy hydration, state provisions for access, availability, and maintenance of water, and allow students to carry water bottles. Next slide, please. If our division is able to update our policy, we want to share with you what Rev Your Bev partners receive to support the King George Division. The campaign is offering free resources such as the Rev Your Bev toolkit, which provides helpful and useful information on how to improve water access. Next slide, please. The Rev Your Bev campaign understands how important water is and is committed to providing a range of free resources to assist Y Street Partner Schools and their divisions in creating environments that promote healthy hydration. Rev Your Bev can offer up to 1,000 water bottles, 125 water promotion posters, 20 fruit-infused water dispensers, and water coolers to school divisions who partner with the campaign to update the school wellness policy. Next slide, please. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk to you about the Rev Your Bev campaign. We are very thankful for your time and hope that you will vote to update our policy to strengthen water access for all students, teachers, and staff in King George County Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Can you stay for possible questions? Board members, any of you have questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I appreciate the update. I know I participated in your, I met with you all in December, thoroughly enjoyed that. You had a lot of great information. So I certainly am in favor of updating our policy to include the changes. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Wait, I have one. This all looks very good, but I'm wondering, once you put all those things in your organization, those access for waters, dispensers, and those sorts of things, is that going to continue every year, I assume? Is that right? I mean, the, like a thousand bottles a year, whatever, is that going to continue?
I'm going to call up Janice to answer that.
Sure, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Janice. I'm the Rev Your Bev campaign manager. The campaign certainly would like to position itself as a partner and a resource. So if the division does find itself in need of continuous water bottles in the years following, certainly a request that we can make to the team and I'm sure that we can accommodate.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, I think what we're going to do is, I've looked a little bit at this. We're going to put it on the agenda as a discussion for the next board meeting. I do see some things we need, and nothing is wrong with it. I appreciate what you wrote, but there are some technical things in there when you, when you list it as a regulation that we need to look at. So we'll be looking and discussing that at the next board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ranko, could you put that on for the next board meeting? Thank you. All right, next, we have the the consent agenda for the meetings of October 24th, 2022, and then that's a special meeting. Then the regular meeting on the 24th, the regular meeting on the 7th, December the 5th, December the 9th, and December 14th. And I will, I guess, briefly go through some of those, those changes. And I appreciate Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Rolls for writing in some of those changes. And one of them is on the regular meeting of October 24th, which is on page five. It said, the motion, Mr. Bush moved to accept the changes that have been made to the BBFA policy with the exception of those that include eliminating the his or her and changing them to broad member or employees and keeping his or her like it is. That was one change. There were some problems with that. And another one was on actually the very next page in the regular board meeting. And that had to do with Mr. Roll's comment, which is about halfway down the page. The CGS director is recommending that math analysis be replaced with AP calculus to allow students to get college credit for it. And if it's okay with the board, I'll just go ahead and read all the changes and we'll vote on all of them together unless there's an objection. Right? I believe the next one is on the December 5th meeting. And that's a very small change. Ms. Gonzalez, you shared that the KGC board earned the team spirit and so on. And that was a correction that was made.
The school board, right? Yeah.
KGC, I'm sorry, school board. Yes, you're right. Sorry. Yes, correct. I believe that was all the changes unless there was, or excuse me, updates, unless there's another one I missed? Yes, Ms. Ranko? Oh, okay. Thank you. On the November 7th, she omitted the S and she added that. Thank you, Ms. Ranko. All right, do I have a motion to accept the updated amended minutes for October 24th special meeting, October 24th regular meeting, November 7th regular meeting, December 5th regular meeting, December 9th special meeting, and December 14th special meeting?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, next we have the action items. And the first one in the action item has to do with the digital, digitalizing of records. And Dr. Boyd, in the last board meeting, gave a very good presentation of that. And so basically, the, I believe the recommendation is, hold on just a moment. I have, I don't know if you can look at a copy. All of it's here in the board docs. But I asked Dr. Boyd, last time that he presented this, he presented a very clear what he wanted for the recommendation. So it has to do with all of the things that he presented about the DOMA organization taking control of digitalizing the King George County School records. And let me read his recommendation and then we'll have some discussion, okay? His recommendation was as follows. "I recommend that we leverage ARPSR funds in the amount of $189,580.75 to contract with DOMA Technologies to migrate, convert, and digitalize King George County School records." Now, we're not voting on that yet, but any discussions, any more discussion, because it is an action item.
Mr. Bush, are you reading that from the, from last meeting's packet? I didn't see the recommendation in the current packet.
He just sent this to me a few hours ago. So it does, if you look on, I think it's the second to the last page, it's in the packet. Basically, that's just an addition of all of the things that they'd be doing and that's just the total.
I don't.
Sounds like it's the same recommendation as from the last packet.
Okay, I just, I didn't.
It's the same recommendation. It's the total summary, yes. It's the total of all the fees that they're going to charge if you look on that page.
Mr. Bush, the, yes, I see the summary. So the pickup, I guess this is a little bit, I know Dr. Boyd's not here. I don't know if he's online and chime in. We normally, though, like, I guess whatever you have is normally disseminated for us to see or is included in the packet as it all finalized.
Ms. Gonzalez, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. So the recommendation is the same as last time. We reached out to the Historical Society and also the Ralph Bunch Alumni Organization. It has not changed our recommendation from last time. As, as Mr. Bush stated, we still recommend and the cost would still be $189,580.75 for the project. I'd be happy to take any other questions as well.
Ms. Gonzalez, I think the breakdown I was talking about is on page 14 of 15.
That, I guess it's like per, your cost per trip. I was wondering if that was discussed, how many trips? I just didn't see a total.
Yeah, so the, the number of trips has not changed. We spoke with the Library of Virginia as well. A lot of these records that we were discussing last time, individual cumulative records and things of that nature are not records that we can give to the, to the Historical Association or to Ralph Bunch alumni. We have located some records that are more general in nature, ones that show a lot about the history of the two organizations, King George County Schools or Ralph Bunch. Those we will keep and don't intend to get digitized, but everything that's a cumulative record, we will, it'll still take those two trips to get them down there and back to digitize all those records.
Okay.
Any further questions before we even make a motion?
Yeah, Dr. Boyd, so are you saying that the Historical Society determined that they're private records? That's why we can't give them away? Is that the situation?
Yeah, that, that advice came from the Library of Virginia, but it's exactly that. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Boyd?
One, only other thing I would consider adding to the recommendation is paying the additional $500 to get the export of all the records. Any concerns about adding that?
Is that not included?
Yeah.
Dr. Boyd, did you hear Mr. Roll's question?
I did, yeah. I don't have any objection to adding that. It is in that breakdown on the last page, but I do believe it's an extra cost if we decide to do that. That shouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Roll, are you recommending that we add the $500?
Yeah, let me pull up the calculator, just to make sure I do this.
190,080.
It is pretty easy.
What is that, Ms. Hoover, did you say? Was it? Oh, does anybody, well, let's look at this first of all. The recommendation then would be, if I'm, can I make this for you, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
He's recommending that we leverage the ARPSR funds in the amount of $190,800.75 to contract with DOMA Technologies to migrate, convert, and digitalize King George County School records. Do I have a motion about that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the policy manual updates. And is there any questions about any one of them? Or do you want to go through each one? Or do you want to keep them as a whole when we do the motion? First of all, are there any questions about any one of them? Because I believe all the changes were made. I looked through and as much as I can tell, all the changes were made. Yes, Mr. Roll?
I think we need to go through, Mr. Bush, I think there are some.
Go through each one of them?
Things to comment on.
All right, yes. All right, let's start with the first one then. BDD, electronic participation in meetings for resource locations.
Kind of, where that starts the, or down.
What's your question?
All right, I'm good with BDD. Mr. Bush, I'm good with BDD.
Oh, you're good with it? All right. All those in, now can I have a motion to approve the manual updates for BDD? Or are you all right, Mr. Roll? But is there any questions, any other ones that anyone had? Because we can do them all together.
I suggest that we do them all together.
I'm in favor of that too, but I want to make sure nobody has any more questions.
We need to get through them all then.
We can do them all together?
We can just go through them one at a time.
Okay.
And.
All right, Mr. Roll, that's good. So we want to go through them one at a time, but then we'll do the motion all together. That sounds fine.
I don't have, I don't have anything until JM.
All right, does anybody have any comments about anything before JM? All right, Mr. Roll, go ahead.
Okay, for that one, I just wanted to provide the feedback. I've risen, brought the concern about whether this is being brought to us annually to meet the requirement to review it annually. And I did talk to Mrs. Ewing at the VSPA. And normally, they say that they just review them every five years, but she did say for this one specifically, they do review it annually. So that should be covered. All I had for it, no problems with the.
So where can you, I see the JM, where is that exactly on the JM?
It's page 11 in the board docs file.
It's, it's the last paragraph of that policy that talks about the annual requirement. And it looks like VSPA reviews it annually, so that should cause it to be kicked to us roughly annually. So I think we're good on that.
Okay, so do you have a recommendation there? Should we put this?
I think it's good as it is.
Good as it is? All right, thank you.
I just told you that I would make that call, so just pass that along.
All right, any more changes, KBA or KBA dash R?
There's one more. I think it's KBA dash R. Let me scroll down and find it.
KBA dash R?
I think so. Actually, maybe it's KBA dash E. Yes, if you go down, look at page two of KBA dash E. The paragraph right before the one that, right before where it says Amanda Higgins, it still says the blank public schools FOIA officer is. So that needs to be changed to King George Public Schools.
Okay, KBAE, page two is where you're referring to?
Right.
BP, do you see where that is, Ms. Ranko? Does everybody see where that is?
Do you see right in the middle page where it says Amanda Higgins?
It's the paragraph right above it.
Yeah, the last.
Right above it, you see it now?
Words right before that.
All right, we could make that change?
I recommend pulling that one and bringing it back next week with the correct.
You recommend what? I'm sorry.
Just considering that this copy doesn't have it, I recommend just pulling it and bringing it back at the next meeting.
All right. If you don't mind, then we'll pull that one and bring it back for the next meeting? All right. Any others? Anybody else for KLB? No? All right, do I have a motion to approve the, the policy updates with the exception of the KBA dash E?
I move that we approve the policy manual updates for BDD, GAA, GBMA, GCN, JM, KBA, KBA dash R, and KLB.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, next is the Title IV grant. Dr. Boyd, are, is there someone to, to present that to us? Dr. Boyd or Ms. Fisher? I'm not sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, is Ms. Fisher not in attendance? I can't see the audience there.
No, you can't. It's okay. Yeah, she's here. She just wanted something. She's stepping up to the microphone right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
I don't have a presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. In general, this is our sixth year with the Title IV grant. Typically, we would present this in July along with Title I, Title II, et cetera. However, we were, this was our year for our monitoring and we were waiting for feedback on that, which we've received in part, but not complete yet. But there is a, kind of like an ultimate deadline of the end of January, which is why this is coming before you tonight.
Yeah, I, anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
Ms. Fisher, just, you said that the, what was the word, terminology used, monitoring or something that was going on that?
Correct. So every federal grant has to be monitored, essentially an audit of the program. And it's on a five-year cycle for every program, Title I, all of the different titles. This Title IV is a new program that just finished its fifth year. So that's what we were going through this summer.
Okay, so is there concern with that not being completed and it being approved? Or is that just kind of an administrative detail at this point?
It's administrative. That's on the state side. We've done our part. It's on their, their side. We were waiting for feedback so that we could make any adjustments to this that we needed to.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and just for the public, Title IV has to do with federal funds, administrating those funds to help students in various capacities. And it has specifically outlined in this document here exactly what those funds will be used for by King George County Schools. All right, I did have, obviously, the date up here says due by July 1st. You already mentioned that now it's extended till January. So I assume there'll be a new form for us to sign or meet it. I think I have to sign it at the bottom of the chair. But there'll be a new form. What goes to have the proper date on it? Or it doesn't matter?
No, I, I don't think it matters. This actual form remains in the school division. We submit our verification electronically, so I think the form is just for our own record.
All right, and the amount of money, of course, we're not sure of yet. It's a grant?
No, the, that's actually already been allocated. It's $32,613.23.
Thank you, I see that now. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to accept this Title IV grant? $32,613.23?
I move that we accept the Title IV grant of $32,613.23.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hoover?
I second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All right, now we begin with some of the discussion items. The VSPA sample code of conduct. So if everybody would pull that up, if they don't. So if everybody would pull that up, if they don't mind. Everybody have that where they can see it? All right. Okay, let's, let's go through this. Take a moment for everybody to read it if you haven't already read it. And then comments. All right, is, hopefully that's enough time. Any comments about any part of this? All right, obviously, we could move this to an action item now, or we can just simply put it on the agenda for the next board meeting as an action item. Any thoughts on that before we move forward? Do you want to make a motion now? Or do you want to let it be an action item at the next board meeting? Ms. Gonzalez?
This is pretty standard, so I'm happy to move to accept it this evening.
Do I have a second for that?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries. We will accept that. And then I believe we'll all have to sign it. Ms. Renko, do you have a copy for us to sign today? Thank you very much. So before you leave, if each one of us would sign that, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, the next discussion item is board salary. Mr. Rolls, I believe you want to say some things and then discuss that a little bit?
We all have a copy of the proposed policy as a handout. And it's also projected up there. By means of just some background, the last pay raise was in the January of twenty twenty. And if we were, and I'm not asking anybody to vote today, but even if we did vote today, a change wouldn't take effect until next January, so January twenty twenty-four. So that mean four years between pay raises and of course, if we did that with our staff, we'd be in a lot of hot water, waiting for four years to do a cost of living adjustment. Then for also about other background, prior to twenty twenty, the, the last pay adjustment there was back to nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty-two years. Really long time. So I think it's pretty clear that it doesn't get looked at or rafted. And so idea is like in general is to have policies that systematically deal with issues that we don't have to think about them too much. We can focus our energy on other things, you know, more novel things that come up. So my day, idea here is just kind of a common sense approach to it, where it's not something that we just think about every couple of decades or so. I think it's in the best interest of the board and the community is that we want to pay for board members to come and serve. And this is really more about, you know, board members after future boards to, to serve them. So so I'm not going to read this. I mean, it's just for discussion right now. So I'll share right now is just the general idea and then ask for thoughts. And the, so basically the gist here, there's like one law that I found that you see right there, and it's also the back of the packet that pertains to this. And understandably, the law is that you can only adjust board pay in election years. So that's just odd number of years like such as this. So if we were to vote for this, we'd have to vote for it by July first before that. And and then it would take effect next January. And so the idea here is to make it, I put it underneath the policy for annual budget, not getting made. So it's just asked the superintendent to plan to put this in the budget that each odd year, we will it apply the same cost of living adjustment to the school pay as has been received by the employees of the division ever since last school board raise. So basically, just get the same raise that you give.
Okay, any discussion about that? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, so I, while I recognize, I think that you, what is included in here is like a four to five percent raise. I'm going to know, given the amount of our salary, that doesn't add up to much. But just, I mean, I don't know about the rest of you. I can only speak for myself. I didn't run for school board for the monetary, I guess, benefit. So just considering the challenges that we routinely have adequately funding the schools and our staff and compensation for them that are actually, who is on a day-to-day basis, meeting the mission of educating our community and students. I don't feel that this is necessary. If we had perhaps a different fiscal environment where we were confident in the funding that we received on a regular basis, I wouldn't see this as an issue. But I think that the message it sends to, to forego this would show the, the investment we have in our staff and our schools. So I don't believe this is a necessary step.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any other comments?
I am it's on, right? Thank you. Um, I tend to agree with Ms. Gonzalez. I understand Mr. Roll's concern since this is, you're new to the process. Uh, but there has not been traditionally an increase, as you noted, over the years. There has occasionally been one. I, I think the Board of Supervisors is similar, although they did some changes in the last couple of years. I, I don't think that we need to change the process so that it becomes automatic. I'm very uncomfortable with not knowing what the future budgets will hold, building in a raise for elected board members since we can choose to run or not run. It will not impact me since I will not be on the board next January. But I, I think the message that we need to send is that our staff comes first.
Other comments? Mr. Rolls?
Yes, I'll respond to that. So I agree with many of the sentiments expressed. I should clarify that it's not an automatic raise. In fact, that would be illegal. So this is just for the superintendent to first planning, to include it in the annual budget. And then that just helps to prompt the board to consider it and to do the calculation versus having to try to re-figure it out every time that you would do it. So my understanding, reading of the law, and I would recommend saying this to a lawyer for review before we would approve it, is that, so it would be in the budget just to prompt the discussion to have a number. But then it would have to be voted on separately by the board to adopt it. Unless the board did that, then it wouldn't be in the budget. It's just a, just a prompt, is all it is. And of course, none of us here ran for the pay because that's not the reason. But what I do think is that just to share something from my own experience from being approached and asked to run for the board because some friends thought there should be more competition for the seat, just that it's better that way to have people competing for the seat. My first reaction wasn't, oh, yes, I've absolutely run for the board. That sounds like I've been wanting, we need to do that my whole life. It was first, I went to go talk to friends in my neighborhood who I thought maybe would be good in the position. And every person said, I'm, I'm too busy. I don't have time for that. And I think to some extent, it's helpful to be able to say, okay, well, there actually is some compensation for that. If you are concerned about time, you can just take that and fully dedicate that towards trying to buy as much of your time back as possible. Get rid of yard work, whatever else that takes up your time and proceeds and dedicate yourself to serving your community in this way. So I think it helps to allow that. And given, we, we do have a large budget here, the five of us, we had fifty-five billion dollars go through our hands last year. So I think as a taxpayer after I'm off the board, I, I feel better about paying a little extra to make sure we have the best people here managing all that money. I do kind of feel like to worry about board pay in the big scheme of things is kind of like being penny wise, but pound foolish. That's my take.
Any other comments? I have a comment. I'm like Ms. Gonzalez and even Mr. Rolls. In fact, even more so is that when I ran for the school board, I actually didn't know that there was any money involved until I was halfway through the election and somebody mentioned it and I said, what? I mean, I would get some money if I'm elected. I said, well, that doesn't, that's, I don't know. Okay, I don't. So I'm in the same way. I did not even think about that as a possibility. It's not saying, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm just saying that you're right. That was not obviously my motivation either. But I want to understand something, Mr. Roll. So you're not necessarily making a recommendation, we put this on for a future discussion and action item. What you're saying is, is that may, we might have the superintendent add the possibility of a one-time raise on the budget. And then if we can look at that and then we would discuss it. And if we looked like we want to do it, that would have to be a separate motion apart from the budget. Is that what you're saying?
Well, with the policy, you would say that is for that in every odd calendar year, when the superintendent is preparing the annual budget, they would factor in that there would be a school board raise the following January to account for all the cost of living adjustments that have been given to the staff and not the school board since the last school board raise. But then that's just for the planning. That's to give a number that could go into a motion. But so that would have to be voted on
Separately.
Separately, each of those, those years.
So you'd want to do that as part of the planning in the budget rather than push it forward in the next, this board meeting, next one or the one after? Is that right? Make it part of the budget planning?
Well, the budget part is just a, a prompt and have like a number that we would actually be able to consider. So passing, my understanding is the passing the budget with this and it would not approve it. I mean, you can't do it that, that way. You'd have to first vote on the raise and then it would, you know, it, it's going to be part of his first
I understand.
Estimate.
What does the rest of the board think about Mr. Roll's ideas?
So as I understand it, it would be a, a budget line item for discussion, but not necessarily an addition to the budget unless approved. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that for discussing.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with, that would just simply prompt further discussion at a specific time when we're also looking at the budget. So I don't see a problem either. It's not saying we're going to for or against it. We're just going to look at it some more.
Yeah, that's the only reason for bringing it right now is just because it is however small of a budget, much impact this factor into the budget.
But you're looking at only that four or five percent one time?
No, the four or five percent is just that part is dealing with the situation we had this past year, which is a little bit novel, where we didn't have a separate COLA to just pull, okay, they got two percent COLA. So, but it actually was just five percent flat, which included a step. So for some people, if they had a two percent step, then that they got three percent COLA. But if other folks had a one percent step, then they effectively got a four percent COLA. And some people have even less than one percent step. So the suggestion here to deal with that is, since it ranges from less than a percent to two percent step raises, if you ever had that situation where it's a certain percentage overall raise, just assume that one percent of it, one percentage point of it is the step. And give the rest of that to the, the board. So last year's situation of a five percent raise, then the board would get a four percent raise instead of the full five that everybody else got.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So just for clarification, I say last year's the five percent that wasn't terribly novel that does occur in the past previously, right? I think maybe to clarify, I think what you're, if we were to take the percentage of the COLAs, because I'm also not sure the math you just did was correct based on percentages last year. But I think what you're trying to say is it would be a point for consideration in a budget. And it would be if a percentage increase were given to employees, it would all, it would also be a consideration for us to receive, board members to receive a similar, the same increase. Is that correct?
Same COLA, but the whole five
Percentage.
The home five percent and four percent that Dr. Bush, I'm sorry, Mr. Bush is referring to as the example in the policy is for the more difficult situation of this past year where we didn't specifically say COLA. We said five percent, which was COLA and step combined.
I'm saying that's not unique.
Okay, that's why I put it here just so we'd have a way to deal with it instead of being confusing. But maybe the wording, you know, that'd be something we could discuss specifically. Wording is confusing or not.
I don't think the wording is confusing. I think the discussion has confused it. But understood.
Yeah, I think I understand. Any objection to basically putting this as part of only the planning session when we get to the budget?
Yeah, I think before this scheme would be up for an action item. We would first just need to decide whether we want to make the edits to the policy before saying it's for a legal review. I think a legal review would need to be part of the process.
So you're, you're saying that we should discuss this with a lawyer?
I don't know that we all need to, but probably would ask you as the chair to present to a lawyer for review.
Thoughts on that?
But that would be a
I don't think we need the expense of discussion with an attorney.
I would recommend we handle it like all policies and have Ms. Ewing review it for compliance or any issues. That would put it in the same category as all other policies.
I think I agree with Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Rolls. If you can accept that, let's review this with Ms. Ewing if that's
We can ask her, but I mean, the reason she reviews our other policy changes is because we pay for policy service. That's for policies they write. This would be a novel, you know, custom King George policy. So I'm not sure if she would review it. We can ask.
Yeah, we could still ask. I think that'd be wise. All right, let's, let's do that then. And Mr. Rolls, maybe get you even to clarify even clearer for the discussion with Ms. Ewing, that what exactly, make sure that it's acceptable and what we'd be moving forward with. All right, so this will not go to necessarily another discussion item or on the action item right now. It will be postponed until we see it possibly as part of the planning for the budget. Okay?
Well, I think for it to be part of the planning, it would have to be approved. But how about we bring back for a discussion and I'll, I can share what Ms. Ewing said next time.
All right, that sounds fine. So for discussion at the next meeting, after we discuss things with Ms. Ewing. All right. Okay, next on the discussion items has to do with policy JHCD dash R. If everybody would turn to that, please, in the board docs. All right. Any discussion? I have several things, but I want to hear from the rest of the board first. Any discussion about this?
Just a clarify, so I think, and Ms. Fisher, I know, I believe you provided some information. But so this wasn't a change based on Virginia code. It was updates to make us in alignment or in a, in compliance with like FDA guidelines?
Yes, sort of. So there have been no changes to statute or any federal law. Homeopathic and alternative medications have always fallen under the purview of the FDA. However, they've not typically enforced that compliance. With the increase in those, my understanding from VDOE is with the increased alternative treatments that are now being sold, the FDA has prioritized the enforcement of those and made an announcement in December regarding that prioritization. One category of which is treatments that are marketed towards children, non-FDA approved alternative homeopathic treatments marketed towards children. And as such, our practice is not changing, but VDOE has recommended that the regulations are very clearly written in at the school board level, making that distinction between FDA approved and non-FDA medication based on a December sixth announcement.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments? I have a couple of comments. Yeah, Ms. Fisher, I'm glad you're up here. It's about the dash R. And when I looked at the original, our original policy of JHCD, and it was three pages long. And when I looked at this, the dash R, I appreciate everything you're saying. And in fact, a lot of it sounds really good, but it's just, it's the, I guess it's part of the process. It's like you went from three pages to six pages on this dash R. And as I understand the dash R, I actually made some phone calls today to understand more about the dash R, which is a regulation. But as I understand, even in our policy, I was trying to find it. I think it's K, KFC, I'm not sure. But it's our policy on what regulation means, basically means it's it's something that we're assigning for the superintendent to implement is my understanding of what a dash R means. And so I guess when I'm looking, some of the major changes that you're in this regulation was that rather than the superintendent do all the things, you're assigning it to the school nurse, which I think are great ideas. All of it's great. But as I was discussing, is this, is this truly a regulation? Or are you looking at to go beyond simply the superintendent making sure that he does this and just simply, because we could make a policy to just simply change the entire policy of this JHCD. make a policy to just simply change the entire policy of this J H C D and not do the R. We could change the whole policy. Why would you want to not do that instead of making it a regulation?
Well, so the policy is is based strictly in in statute and whatever the legal advice of the FDA and whatnot is. The regulation is our local internal procedures that align with the policy. And these regulations are perhaps updated more frequently as the internal procedures change. And it doesn't, the policies will indicate whether a regulation is required by code or not. I can't speak specifically to this one. I'm fairly certain it is. But some regulations we choose as a division to create for our own, you know, kind of black and white, have it on paper purposes. Others were legally required to have. So where the superintendent is maybe required to create a regulation, he's not the one that's actually implementing it on the ground. It would be the teachers or administrators, et cetera. So that's what this would be. We work with the superintendent to create the regulation to go over the procedures. But ultimately, it's obviously implemented by others in the division.
Yeah, he directs you to to do these. And so I assume you've had a long discussion with Dr. Boyd about this or at least a discussion?
So the the regulation as a whole has been in place for quite some time. We did do like an entire revamp back in the fall because the policy that it was attached to was restructured and things were moved around. It was nearly impossible to redline the regulation that existed into this current regulation simply because there was so much movement of text. The procedure itself has not changed, but the formatting and the the structure of the regulation did. So that was back, I think it was like September, October, actually I could look. This addition, these two sentences, two clauses that have been added here are simply based on the recommendations that came from that FDA announcement in December. But otherwise, the procedures and at the school level have not changed. If that makes sense.
All right. Yeah, I can see there's already a J H C D dash R. And so you're going to basically update just that one. And you like you want to keep it in the regulation. It's just I'm trying to get more clear in terms of understanding the actual process of having it a regulation and not just simply putting it as part of our policy. And I understand that's the local. It's not, it's not, we're not changing what is directed by the state or by V S B A, whatever. This is what locally and how we're implementing what that standard policy is.
Yes.
I just see that in some cases, we might want to just simply change it to our policy, which we have the authority to do. But thank you very much. Any other discussion on that?
So, Mr. Bush, I would just add, so there just for general understanding. So we do have a number of regulations, right, that come through our policies?
That's correct.
And this one does have that the policy does have the does require that a regulate the school have a regulation. So I would, I would.
Oh, it does not require.
Well, it, the policy.
Part of the policy.
The policy says regulation, the superintendent shall develop a regulation for administration of medicines.
Right. But we can make it part of the policy where he'll still do that and it not be the regulation. But we don't need to get into that discussion right now. I I'm I'm fine with it. I just wanted to clarify some things. But I think in the future, we do need to look at this as to whether we keep it as a regulation related to the policy or we simply change our policy. That's just simply again, process.
I would like one, sorry, one, I'm just the more, the more we change them, the more work we make for everyone. We have a policy and regulation. I would, I personally would recommend they meet the intent, they meet the requirement we would to approve them and not make more work for our staff. But that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
I'd like to make a comment. I I think the intent of a regulation, as Ms. Fisher said, is to determine the local procedure, the protocols that we in King George use. And to do away with the regulation means that our staff would in looking for a protocol would not be able to go directly to J H C D dash R, but would not that it's a great deal, but the fact is that the regulation is there for a purpose. So I, my recommendation is that we maintain regulations for their purpose.
Yeah, their comments, Mr. Roll?
Yes. So looking at what Ms. Gonzalez pointed out as far as the policy saying that the superintendent shall develop a regulation. I think it's important to be clear about all this works and what the expectation is here. My understanding, just as far as in the V S B A describes it and makes sense to me is that we make policies, superintendent makes regulations. So in a sense, the fact this is being presented here, it could just be an FYI. I don't know. I don't know that we actually need to approve this. Does anybody think that we need to prove this as the school board? Or does superintendent not just have the authority to write regulations as long as it's consistent with the policy?
Okay, your question is, does the school, I mean, excuse me, does the superintendent have the authority to be able to simply write a recommendation without it going to the school board? Ms. Fisher, do you have a comment on that or anyone else on the board?
I don't know that answer.
Like, what's the, what is the request? Are we being asked to approve this? But I don't, I don't know that we need to.
What would be the purpose in our not approving a regulation?
Just to not get into more details than we have to when it's within the superintendent's purview?
You've just gotten into the details of salary, budget procedure.
Which the superintendent cannot do.
Details of administering prescription medicines.
It's a regulation. That's what regulation means.
It's part of our policy.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I make sure that everybody gets recognized by the chair before we make a comment? Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
I'm just, I mean, it's the regulations are a part of our policy manuals. So I, it makes sense to me that we would approve the regulation.
Policy says the superintendent shall develop a.
Could you mind? Yeah. I I think Ms. Hawk had something before you. Ms. Hawk? Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, just reading a superintendent shall develop a regulation for administration of medicines to students. And then regulation shall include provisions for handling so on and so forth. But it just says superintendent does that, which is consistent with what if you read, you know, the V S B A's distractions on policies and regulations. It's regulations are strictly the superintendent's purview, but I think there is some latitude for individual school boards to decide how they want to handle it. Sounds like a different opinion here about that. I would just generally begin with the V S B A recommendation of regulations are on the superintendent. And I would ask that if if the regulation changes that like this, they present to us for our awareness, but not necessarily for approval.
Any other comments? All right, let me ask you a question, Ms. Fisher. Has there ever been something like this where it's just been like Mr. Rolls is saying, where it's just simply the superintendent made a change in regulation and didn't necessarily bring it to the board? It's just a regulation. It's probably bring it to us just as an FYI, as he's mentioning. Has that ever happened before?
So I can just speak to my experience. When a policy states the superintendent shall create a regulation, we've always attached it to the policy and gone before the board. But certainly there are hundreds of other protocols and procedures that we have outlined, you know, at the division level that don't amount to a regulation. But again, that's, that's just my experience.
So and the division, their staff or the staff agrees that this does rise to the level of putting it as actually as a regulation in the policy. Because you're right, I think there's probably a lot of others that it says that it's recommended that superintendent or that the school division does such and such. But then they complete it without necessarily having to write a regulation. So what I hear you saying is is usually when it refers directly to that there be a recommendation for the superintendent. And that is when you would make sure that it is a policy recommendation to be approved by the board.
That has been my involvement, yes.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. Again, this is just up for discussion. Do you want to continue this discussion, Mr. Rolls? You've been the main comment or any of those others, Ms. Gonzalez or Ms. Hawk? Or do you want to put it as an action item next next time or continue discussions on this? Ms. Gonzalez?
I would recommend bringing it back for action at our next meeting.
I'm good with that.
Everybody agrees? All right. So we'll put it, we'll put it down for action at our next meeting. Thank you for the comments. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All right, superintendent's evaluation process. I believe, Ms. Gonzalez, you wanted to say something or make a small presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Vance, do we have the slides for the superintendent evaluation process? All right. So, okay, so these you'll see that they are presenters, obviously, that are not King George County schools. So this is a presentation I just pulled right from the V S B A annual convention. On one of the sessions that I attended in Williamsburg, that was focused on customizing the superintendent evaluation process. You know, we're in a, I think, you know, a good crossroads with a new superintendent and number of new board members, right? And I think it's a good opportunity for us to reevaluate what our superintendent evaluation process looks like. And I wanted to share this. I certainly won't go through all the details. I just kind of wanted to hit the highlights for consideration because I thought this board, when they presented it, it was two of their board members that talked to how they executed it. And I believe they were in a similar situation. I think they had a new superintendent. They had five new board members. Anyway, and they were trying to kind of, they had, they didn't have a robust superintendent evaluation process and they wanted to come up with one. So I'll just kind of hit the highlights and 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 leave it at that. But they have, there's a lot, a lot more of their information. They they uploaded like copies of their policies and all that. And I have downloaded all of that should we care to return to it in the future. We go to the next slide. So, you know, as board members were often, we often say, right, our most important job is to hire the superintendent. And they added, these two board members, when they were presenting, they added the interesting twist. Well, like, okay, yeah, that is an important job. But if that's your only job, you do it once every, hopefully, you know, not very often, right? Like, so we've hired one in the last, you know, month or so. And before that, it hadn't been for 10 years. So that's not much of a job. So if you go to the next slide, they wanted to highlight, right, really, your job is to evaluate your superintendent and make sure that your superintendent is meeting up, living up to the expectations of the board and the community, right? So, next slide. So, so where to begin this? Again, I'll just kind of hit the hit the highlights. So, you know, V S B A offers the superintendent evaluation workshop. I know we haven't done one together as a board. I know that's been an ongoing conversation. I know I brought it up last year, but it was recommended we wait till we have the new superintendent online, which we do now, and we have our board finalized. So anyway, so there's, so there's that process. This particular board, they actually hired a school board consultant, which would obviously cost money. So I'm not saying necessarily that that's the approach, but that's what they did. Someone who had done this and was familiar with the process. Okay, next slide. So the three main steps that they 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 highlighted for making sure this was an effective process, right, is identifying what your process is going to be for coming up with your evaluation process. How are you going to implement that in your policy and how does it align with your superintendent's contract? Next slide. So the process, the plan, so this was, again, this is the process that they used. So we, you know, any board, we could tailor it accordingly, but this is what they did. And I personally thought it was very robust and certainly customized as they had advertised. So talk about, right, coming up with a timeline for what your evaluation process needs to look like. How does your existing superintendent contract affect your plan? What's in there? You might need to, you might need to make some changes to your contract to make sure you're aligned with how you're, how you have agreed to be evaluated. And then what components are you using in your evaluation? And so these are the ones that this board, the Chesterfield, used. So they tied their performance objectives, which were set in, I think, from their strategic plan with survey data, which I thought was unique. I know we maybe last year talked a little bit about looking at surveys to get feedback from from stakeholders in superintendent performance. And so they did just that. They did a leadership survey and a three sixty survey. Came up with metrics, so on. All right, next slide. So they talk about kind of the steps for implementing this, right, was so start with your superintendent evaluation policy. We do have one. I pulled it. I don't have it pulled up at the moment. You know, it basically says we're required to do a superintendent evaluation, which we are by law. So there's that, right? But maybe we want to change the language. Things to include in your policy. What are the components that you're going to use? What's the process for how you're going to come up with a development plan? So how you're going to use your feedback and your evaluation as a tool to to communicate what changes and process improvements you would like your superintendent to make in their upcoming performance cycle. Responsibilities, who's coordinating it? And then the methodology for determining whether or not your superintendent has met the minimum expectations of their employment contract. Okay, next slide. All right. So coming up with the rubric, this is kind of a recap of some of their, of some of their other sides. You can go to the next slide, Mr. Vance. Okay, so this one, so the the framework, so they started with, they have three, they use three components for the actual calculation of their performance, their superintendent's performance. And their first one was these performance objectives. So they started with their division's strategic plan, which we now have one that is brand new, right? Again, all this I feel like is a perfect storm of like a great time to do this and look at kind of reset how we've operated and done this to to date, right? Come up, what are the top three or four priorities of your board? So I know in my tenure on this board, we haven't really, we haven't established board priorities. I know there's interest in a board retreat coming up with how we want to, you know, how we want to tackle all of this as a board. I think we would come up hopefully, right, with those priorities, our objectives, what we want, how we want to operate as a board, how we want the division to operate, right? So that we we have an opportunity to create that. And then if our strategic plan lays out how those priorities are measured, right? And we get a review of that last week. So again, we have the information that we need to get started. And then they pointed out, right, your performance objectives can change, they can be amended. But they can be used to help your superintendent and their and their staff, right? Understand what the priorities are and make sure everyone is headed in the right, you know, in the same direction. All right. So the next slide. So this talks about the leadership evaluation surveys that they used. So they did, I was trying to look back at my notes. They did a leadership survey that was like a survey put out, you know, anonymously. They call it to, a lot of folks call it their superintendent's cabinet. So for us, that's our central office staff, I would imagine. Another, a survey submitted to the or submitted by school board members, which would be a change from how we typically provide our feedback. And then if you wanted to add, they have a three sixty evaluation that I think is on their next slide that could go to whoever. We could send it to the rest of the staff. It could be to parents. You know, we could, we could work on what we wanted that to be, right? But to really get a good three sixty look at how people think our superintendent is in fact performing. And so they did point out, right, that the cabinet data, so in this case, like, kind of, you know, superintendent staff data, they didn't use that to actually influence the evaluation rating, but it was information for the school board to use in determining what the evaluation metric or what the performance assessment was. Okay, next slide. Let's see. So again, this is, this was the three sixty evaluation. So again, that was kind of the rest of the survey. Next slide. So this slide shows the three components that they used in their evaluation framework. So the first one, right, and on the right hand side, you'll see a weighting of how much of it was used to influence the assessment. So they use their performance objectives, which were pulled from their strategic plan. They used feedback from their leadership survey and then feedback from their three sixty survey to come up with the overall evaluation rating. The next slide. So then the the element regarding the superintendent's contract. So this is, they, they, I believe, went back and they looked at their superintendent contract and they amended it to align it with how the superintendent evaluation was going to be implemented. So I know, you know, we just, we just went through this process, right, with coming up with the contract for our superintendent. And I think our our language is very similar, right? It's like, you know, agreeing upon the evaluation instrument. And anyway, so you can see they changed it, right? They updated it to make it more relevant to what they were doing. And so the next slide, I believe, is the last one or the next to last one. So this is just kind of a summary, right, just saying the takeaways were, you know, if you want to look at revamping your superintendent evaluation process, come up with your metrics, get input, identify who your stakeholders are and how you want to get input from them to figure out your defined dates and frequencies, you know, we, I know we have not done the best job meeting the the timeline, right? And we, I think we've worked to improve that. So this would be a means to to meet that intent as well. And then make sure your process, your policy and your contract align and make sure you've made the appropriate updates if you needed to. And then they, one thing they commented, their super, their entire evaluation process was done in a public setting, obviously, not not all of it, but how they developed the, how they developed the process was all done in public. So much as we, how we defined our like qualification criteria and evaluation criteria for our superintendent contract, they did all of their, their, this process in public. And they even, I think they said their superintendent's contract is public. They were very open and public with all of their information so that everyone could see, all of the community and stakeholders could see what, you know, they were just trying to be very transparent to get a lot of buy in from the community, which I thought was novel. And so I think maybe there's one more slide, Mr. Vance. One or two. And so this just kind of right, like, oh, yeah, questions. If you go back one just to really highlight, which to me was why I wanted to bring this for consideration is just right. The the opportunity to to reevaluate this. The, the opportunity to, to reevaluate this, to show the public that we're committed to really trying to make sure we are, we are serious about implementing and evaluating and following through with, with our expectations for the superintendent. Like I said, I just thought this was a great time to implement that. So being clear in our expectations, it would be a good opportunity to focus as a board, right? On what, what we want to accomplish. And then just making sure that the performance is better aligned to board priorities, which, you know, we talked about. So that's basically it. I just wanted to throw that out there. Like I said, I have, I've downloaded all the other information that was like, you know, copies of their policies. And really, they've done a lot of legwork. Obviously, I think if this is a direction that we were interested in going, there would obviously be some, it would be work, right? It would be work for us to come up with what our criteria is, map it to our strategic plan and all of that. But I personally, I think it would be a very, it would be time well spent. If there's interested, I know, I think you, Mr. Bush, you're going to attend the, you know, the next workshop, I think, on the subject. So I just, I'm, I'm happy to, to pull the rest of the information and like come up with an approach. And I'm happy to like do homework and work if this is a direction that we're interested in going. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. That was very well done. Any questions for Ms. Gonzalez?
I'd say thank you for presenting that. I think there's definitely a lot of really good information and ideas in there. You mentioned the surveys like those and that 360 degree review. I think those, I've had good experiences with those.
Me too.
You got the, the other folks had done all this publicly. And I do wonder about the process, about how to approach this. It does seem like, it's something I would guess that they would go and do that kind of retreat or something just to talk freely. But so just even how to get the ball rolling would, would be an important question to answer.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to put more brain power into it and come back with like an approach for doing this. Like I, I'm, I'm happy to do that, so.
Any others?
I have a couple of comments. Yes, I'll, I'll be attending the superintendent's evaluation in February. In fact, Dr. Boyd's coming with me. So I think it'd be very valuable. And I love some of the ideas that you had mentioned, especially the idea of connecting his performance to some of the objectives from our strategic plans and so on. And especially then making it more available to the public and at least the process. I think that's wonderful ideas. And then even weighting some of these things at the end, which is commonly what you would do when you're evaluating, whether it's a president or a chairman of a board even, or superintendent. I think then you look at all these factors, but then you just simply don't make it, you weight them and you have actual data that I think would be very valuable. I agree with a lot of this. And I'm curious to see in the training that we're going to go through how this will match or different or whatever. And so I think, Ms. Gonzalez, it would be very good is that after we go through the training is that maybe even you and I spend a little bit of time together and see how we could come together with some of those thoughts. Because I have a feeling, this is great stuff. I have a feeling that we may not be able to come together and actually make a, one of us make the presentation to the board after my training. And I think that'd be very valuable. I do agree that we can do a better job with the evaluation process. I think we can improve that. So I think you mentioned that and I think we can, not that it was terrible, but it was not necessarily especially connected to performance of the division. And I think that that's, that's a very valuable thing. Any other last comments before we move on? All right, so if you can, I'll talk with you, Ms. Ranka, but we'll put that as a future discussion slash presentation, probably sometime in March. And then I'll discuss that with you when it would be an appropriate board meeting. Okay, next, we have the information items, the committee reports. And I'll try to change each time we do this. We'll start at one end, this time we'll start at this end with Ms. Hoover, committee reports.
Okay, this past Tuesday, the 17th, I attended the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee Meeting. And they're in the process of updating their plan, their five-year plan for board approval, which we'll see sometime in May. The staff has put a lot of work into the document already, ensuring that it's, it's thorough and that the needs of the gifted and talented students are met. And I enjoyed meeting the staff and I look forward to working with them. And then I also attended the Commonwealth Governor's School Committee Meeting on Thursday, the 19th. And it was great to meet all those team members as well. And I will let Mr. Rolls report on that.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Ms. Hough?
Yes, I met, we, we're still meeting by Zoom, the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. And we proceeded and elected officers. And I am serving on the executive committee as I did last year. We are also concerned about, well, we looked at the budget calendar and Dr. Strong has, has presented us a budget calendar that will be completed by February 16th. And we will do a vote on the final budget by then. There is some discussion ongoing about trying to encourage especially our middle school, in our middle school students to be available and to have more updated Chesapeake Bay Governor's School information presented to them. So Dr. Strong is in process of meeting with the middle school principals of the regions involved and trying to communicate more directly with middle school students. Because although the Governor's School doesn't start until 10th grade, there's a lot of preparation that needs to go into the application and, and thinking about whether you want to get involved in this. It's a wonderful, wonderful Governor's School. And, you know, it has interesting areas of focus that we wouldn't necessarily be able to provide here in our setting. So we are trying to increase our interest both at middle school and high school for our seats in the Governor's School. The, we, last year, we hired a, what they call, what they're calling a, what's a counselor, but it's also a student opportunities contact who is developing apprenticeships and other kinds of professional development opportunities for students at the Governor's School, both for summer and postgraduate opportunities. So we're real excited about that.
Thank you, Ms. Huck. Ms. Gonzalez?
I don't have any reports.
Mr. Rolls?
Yes, on Thursday, as Ms. Hoover said, attended the Commonwealth Governor's School Meeting. And I, I got in your input last time about the issue of the fiscal agency. And I think some people had some apprehension about the meeting, knowing that it was going to be the first time that it'd be contested in the 25-year history of the Governor's School. But in the end, like I say, I think it was actually an excellent meeting. You know, there is such a thing as productive conflict, and I think that's what we had. So it ended up being a 3-1 vote for the fiscal agency. So I, as directed, and Spotsylvania and Carolina all voted for Spotsylvania to maintain the fiscal agency, with Stafford being the sole dissenting vote. But again, a lot of constructive comments were made, so we got a lot more out in the open than before. So I think we have some areas for improvement identified, which is good. And we've agreed to have a retreat, hopefully in February, to go back, look at some of our foundational documents. Because that was one of the main comments is that maybe we're not as familiar with and adhering as closely to our constitutions we should be. And so we can go look at that, and if there's any needed changes, we can, we can make those. And yet, and there were no hard feelings either about, you know, Stafford making the comments. I appreciate the comments. And in fact, we elected the Stafford representative to be the chairman of the board going forward with, with me as the vice. And yeah, I think all, all the problems that are mentioned are very correctable. It's not to say that the Governor's Schools have any issues. I think it's all very correctable and it will be this year. I think we'll be a lot better for having brought these things up and dealing with them. So I'm always highly encouraged by CGS. And I did see in this most recent report from the director that King George, and we always have 20 seats, and we had 34 applicants for it this year, which is, we have the highest success rate of any division in the, in the regional Governor's School. So that's a great opportunity we provide here in King George. Because by comparison, Stafford, they have 90 seats, but they have about 300 students apply. So they're about a third, less than a third of them are getting in. So it's a really great opportunity here in King George. And I've said before about how I highly recommend middle schoolers looking at it, looking at CGS, considering it. And as Mrs. Huck was saying, it's something you start looking at middle school to have an idea of what you need to apply, to consider it. And I was talking to the director, Mrs. Grigsby, afterwards about, there's all the great books they read. And then obviously it's high school, so you're playing sports too. And like, thank you, man, I wish I could go to CGS, it sounds great, but it's, it's really a wonderful program. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I liked your idea of constructive conflict. That was good. No, thank you for the report, and especially considering we had a little bit of discussion about it in the last board meeting. Thank you very much. All right, I don't have any committee reports. So now on Dr. Boyd, are you online still?
Yes, sir. I'm online. I don't have anything additional. I just appreciate you guys accommodating me this evening and look forward to getting back as soon as I kick this illness. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Boyd, and hope you get well soon. All right, board comments, this time we'll start at this end, Ms. Gonzalez? Oh, no, I'm sorry, let's start with the students. I'm sorry, Jackson, you are first.
Let me get closer. There was a few problems with the sub-ordering system that Dr. Boyd helped introduce. That was previously mentioned, I think, maybe two meetings ago before the break. It was just, there was issues recording the data for what the kids were ordering. However, Ms. Nicole, the cafeteria manager, along with Ms. Strauss devised a plan to set up a new system to make it more efficient. And the hope is to have the forms out in the mornings and then done by 8:15 in the morning to allow students to order the foods. And, and that should be starting up this week. I don't know if it started to, I think Ms. Strauss told me sometime this week. So hopefully that starts up soon. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Devin?
All right, thank you. I have two things to, dear, I have two things to say today. So firstly, on the weekend before last, we had district band auditions for our band students. We had 11 students make a band, including a first chair in the top band. And we had three alternates, which especially compared to last year, I thought was great. Since last year, we only had like, I don't know, five or six students make it. So that was, I definitely enjoyed seeing that result. And the second thing that I had today is that our library just released activity kits called Creator Kits that are now available for checkout. From what I understand, these are basically teaching kids new skills to learn, including painting, writing and calligraphy and playing the ukulele. I thought this was a great idea to promote the library, visits to the library. And I certainly hope that students find them enjoyable and maybe find a new hobby with these kids. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gonzalez?
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush. So I, I do regret, I will not be at the next meeting on February 6th, although it is for a school board related reason. I'll be participating in the Federal Advocacy Institute on Capitol Hill with the 2023 Federal Relations Committee. I was appointed as the representative for the 7th Congressional District. So the Federal Relations Committee was established several years ago to conduct advocacy efforts on federal issues that impact school boards and the school, well, sorry, school divisions in Virginia. And I guess they took a bit of a hiatus during COVID and they've kicked it back off this year in 2023. So on February 6th and 7th, so it's Monday and Tuesday, we'll be meeting with our, with our congressional senators and representatives. So since time, you know, the senator and House Representative time schedules are pretty tight. They have put together a briefing booklet to kind of be like key talking points in the meetings. And so I did just want to give a quick overview. So the topics included this year as key talking points were advocating, basically advocating, right, for funding and those sorts of things. So advocating for support for mental health services, doing more in the next reauthorization of the Higher Education Act to promote recruitment of quality teachers, to advocate for increasing funding to meet the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act mandates, and making that idea of funding a mandatory budget expenditure. And to encourage Congress to consider reinstating advanced refunding into the federal tax code, which would allow school divisions and other municipal bond issuers to secure significant savings and costs for financing capital improvement projects used in public schools. So anyway, I'm really looking forward to that. I'm sorry I won't be here, but I look forward to attending and, you know, returning and letting you all know what the, how it goes. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Roll?
I want to thank the two ladies who came and presented to us about Y Street Organization and Rev Your Bed. It's great that they're doing it to help promote healthy habits in the schools. I definitely enjoy my drinking lots of water every day, so it's great advice. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rolls. Ms. Hoover?
I wanted to also thank the, the young ladies for their Rev Your Bed camp, Bev campaign because I know that drinking water and having water, you know, all the time is very important. And some students, I have heard, you know, complain about not being able to do so. Also, I want to thank King George Elementary School SCA for their leading the flag. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Ms. Hough?
Um, yes, and to follow up on our, our students' comments. I, I, I don't know any other way to say it except that our music program rocks. It is amazing at all levels and it's growing, as Devin spoke of. I, I really would like to suggest that at some point, and Dr. Boyd, if you're listening, perhaps we can ask you to follow up, that we, we can have our music directors at each level come and update us about the programs and their needs, especially now during the budget process. They are always in need of instruments and additional professional development and so many things. And I'm not even really is familiar with the high school level, but hope to be. I, I think it is an essential part of our curriculum. And hopefully, we can involve more students at each level. I'm also a little concerned and, and I need to further investigate about what's happening at our preschool level with their music and their arts program. So if we could ask Dr. Boyd to follow up and give us some information about those kinds of activities, it would be helpful as well. I also am interested in a training opportunity for us as a board, either individual or as a group. And it is a Zoom activity. And it is not by V S B A for a change. It's by a professional development association. And I did send the information to all of you in an email and today, I, I hope it got through. If it did not, let me know and I will send it again. But the topic for this particular one is equity in K-12. And it's directed especially towards school administration and board members as well. We get a better, we get a discount if we have five members sign up, if that's possible. Although the downside is that it is at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. And I know that's, that's a disadvantage for those of you who are not retired. If you, I, I plan to sign up and get involved and hope that you'll take a look at that activity and see whether that would be good for you all as well. That, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Huck. What was the date of that?
February 23rd. The Thursday, I believe.
Well, we'll look at that. Thank you very much. I also am very happy when I saw the King George Elementary School, the student council and the, the leading us in the pledge. That was wonderful. And I also had the opportunity to chaperone a dance for the fourth and fifth graders called the Snowball Dance. It was quite an experience, but it was kind of fun. Those kids really let it all out for a change, you know? And of course, dances, I guess you could call it that, but it was more like a, a great activity for the kids. And they were able to, kind of, as several teachers said, for the last six, eight months, they've been, they haven't had much freedom to interact together like that dance provided. And it was really wonderful and I appreciate it. Also, I thank the, that committee with the two young ladies that presented, the Y Street Organization, especially about water. Also, I thank the, that committee with the two young ladies that presented, the Y Street Organization, especially about water. I agree with you, agree with you, Ms. Hoover. And I think it was a, a great, a great presentation. And of course, we'll be discussing it farther in terms of a possible change to our, to our policies. And we'll be just discussing that at the next meeting. All right, that is all I have. And then also I hope that Dr. Boyd will soon be back with us by the next board meeting. And thank you for letting us know, Ms. Gonzalez, about your absence at the next board meeting. And we appreciate everything that you bring to this board. All right. Next, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to state code section two dot two dash three seven eleven dot eight, dot A, dot one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment of substitutes, stipends, resignations, terminations and retirements of employees at the school board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board chair votes aye, motion carries. We are now in closed session. Do, can you hear me? Do I have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to state code two point two dash thirty seven twelve dot D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor and?
You need to certify.
Second and certify.
Second and certify, okay. Certify?
Certify.
And you certi, I certify also. Thank you. All right, now action resulting from?
It's called a motion.
Oh. Oh, but all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And the chair votes aye, so motion carries. We're back in open session. All right. Next is the action resulting from the closed meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Rolls. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but the chair votes aye, motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.